Moving on to ordinance number fourteen thirty seven dash twenty five, the city water restrictions.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Just like before, I'm here for the second reading on the permanent water restrictions.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve for second reading ordinance one four three seven dash twenty five which sets permanent outdoor water restrictions for the city of Valley Center.
Have a motion as second to approve ordinance fourteen thirty seven dash twenty five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, ready. Moving on to new business, the Dar Reefs Across America request.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I get the opportunity to come once again this year. This is our seventh year to do Reefs Across America in the cemetery and I've come for your approval that we hold that ceremony on December thirteenth at eleven AM. So I'm asking your permission to use the cemetery and Mayor, I'm sure we've got a email out there asking for you to come and be there and all of you are invited. So I don't know, do I need to stop and let you discuss that? You want my second part too? I'm gonna ask for money too. So I'm asking for a donation again this year to help pay for wreaths. We are only doing the Valley Center Cemetery this year. Unfortunately, our chapter's gotten smaller and so we're just focusing on the Valley Center Cemetery. That's the one we care the most about, veterans in the cemetery, so. Any donation will help. One more thing I'd like to say before I forget. I wanted to thank Neil Owens and the Park Department for the putting up the bench for Pam Porter. We didn't get a chance last year to have any kind of memorial for Pam. We had illnesses in our chapter and we wanted to do something important for her. We just we just didn't get it done. I think we're just gonna do something small within our chapter, maybe invite the family, but we wanted to thank them so much for putting that together and putting in the concrete and even though we paid for, you know, some of that, they did an awesome job and it looks great in the veteran cemetery. I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you. Ron, you have question?
No, I don't have a question, but Pam, nice to see you again.
I see you too.
The one question maybe I do have is, can you explain to everyone in here how we receive these wreaths and where they come from?
I'm sorry, the wreaths. They come from the national organization Reefs Across America. They're live balsam wreaths. They, you know, we order them. They come in, they're seventeen dollars apiece. They come in about the first week or so in December. Once the ceremony is over, then the scouts and volunteers go and lay them on the veterans. Each scout is, or volunteer is asked to stop and say each veteran's name and give them the respect that they are deserving of. And then they lay the wreath. The scouts have been wonderful to help us. They do come back the third Saturday. We, they kind of started doing it after Trapper's rendezvous. Come back the third Saturday in January to pick those wreaths back up so they don't lay there and it's not part of the cemetery's you know, responsibility to come pick those back up, so. But this is a national organization. They started out by putting recent Arlington. They completely cover Arlington Cemetery. And my husband and I actually go back to Fort Scott and there is the number one national cemetery in Fort Scott and they have people back there work to cover that cemetery. I can't even remember how many graves are there. It is an awesome sight to see every one of those graves covered. It is just awesome.
I'd like to thank you for your participation in it. Please pass it on to the other ladies.
I will, I will, thank you.
If I can make it, I'll be there.
I hope you can. I sure miss Dwayne coming, but you know, I know health, he just can't be there anymore.
Dale?
Mr. Miller, how much did we donate last year again? Three fifty? Is that a good number for this year again?
Good evening. Just a quick update. I'm just gonna give kind of all the information here, but community development is the one department that we have that is already slightly over budget for the entire year with two months left. A lot of that is actually not things that they can control. We've had a lot of contract type expenses, computer expenses, different phone systems, stuff like that that kind of pushed them over budget. So at a whole, the community development is now over budget, but as far as the other costs miscellaneous, the twenty thousand dollar economic fund, they still do have five thousand two hundred ninety one dollars and forty eight cents left in that fund. And at a higher level, the entire general fund is in better shape by about a hundred and forty thousand dollars than we were last year. And I've not given you guys an update on this, but in early July, I kind of told you how employee benefits was really struggling and we were gonna probably need to bail that out. We've continued to get reimbursements from the twenty twenty four year into that fund that are substantial, probably in the low six figures. Additional reimbursements that we did not think were coming, so I don't think the general fund will have to bail out employee benefits very much or possibly at all. So we certainly have the money for this, but I'm just letting you know, community development is over budget. The three hundred and fifty dollars, we could find a place to help them out if so choose.
Thank you.
Amy?
In the letter, it references fifty one veterans. Are those veterans in the Valley Center cemetery?
Yes, I think actually, I think Neil is the one who gives it to the American Legion, but we got it from the American Legion, so yes. And we know each of their names, so yeah.
But.
Brett made a good, good point here. We do not do expenses of revenue by funds yet, but the number of building permits that we've had absolutely exceptional over the last sixty days. So we're, again, that's part of the reason we're trending well ahead and, you know, if we were putting revenues and expenses into community development, they would be a very strong fund this year, but again, I only track it as expenses. So again, I have no problem putting that quest into community development if you so choose to do.
I would like to make a comment. I did, I did, that's all right. I would like to make a comment. I did attend my first wreath day last year. It was awesome. It was, it was just amazing what those scouts and you folks put together, so. I appreciate what you do and I'm glad you're continuing. Dale?
Sorry, I had another question. If we give you three fifty, how do you get the rest of the money?
I'm sorry.
If we give you three hundred and fifty dollars, how much, how do you get the rest of the eight hundred and sixty seven?
Well, we've, we've bought some from our chapter and I'm gonna go talk to the American Legion, American Legion, oh, Lions Club. And then we get some from the city. Edward Jones gives us some and if we're short anymore, we'll beat our chapter members up.
You have a form also, don't you fill out so individuals can buy those wreaths for their veterans?
Yes, oh, I bet I left them out in the car. I will bring them in.
Okay, well, that's, you know, I know that's, that pays for them too, so.
Yes, yes. I will go out and get them.
I'll move to approve a donation to the DAR for the Reefs Across America program in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve the Reefs Across America donation of five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you very much.
So much. That is so helpful. We appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Bring some of those forms in and set them at the table there.
I sure will. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to I to B, approval of Contract Waste Connections.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Herschel with Waste Connections. You already know who I am. It's about that time. It's almost been five years and I came to Brent a couple, two, three months ago, wanting to see if the city wanted to renew for another term. And hopefully, city has decided to do so. I don't know if you had a chance to, everybody had a chance to see the proposal. And we're looking, I think we're looking at doing another ten year, or another ten year agreement. We've done five years the first time. Hopefully, we proved ourselves. Hopefully, the service has been a quality service. It's been great. We want to thank you for the business. It's been great working with, with Brent for the last almost five years. So hopefully, we can renew for ten more years.
Any questions or comments? Dan?
Herschel, I didn't get a chance to look specifically for it, but does this still include the bulk waste coupon that we've had? Okay. Thank you.
Nothing has really changed. Everything that we provided in the last agreement, we're doing the same thing.
Thank you.
Robert?
Herschel, I thought there was a little bit of a change there to an additional, an additional basket there that, I saw that that was added. I don't remember us having that in there where that there's an additional charge, almost nine dollars, ten dollars for an additional ninety five gallon for pickup and I know, I thought we.
That's been part of the.
Cause I thought we were at one, one container and then up to seven bags on the side and now I see it's one container and five bags.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hello. I was gonna try not to talk too much.
I guess you don't get to talk, Herschel.
So.
I guess you don't get to talk.
But so to Herschel, and so, so we have had, it's the same agreement, actually, the dollar amount's reduced. But yeah, everyone that wants an additional can, so in that seventeen, currently it's seventeen eighty seven per month. Every resident receives one trash and one recycling. And so everyone receives those two containers and then they can have five additional bags out on the curb every week. And then if somebody wants one additional either recycling or an additional trash can, we've had this in the agreements as we signed the first five year agreement, that it's an additional nine seventy six per month. And so that doesn't change at all. During our transition from Waste Management to Waste Connections, it was probably the first actual audit that had been done of who's actually paying for a few extra cans and who aren't. And so we went through those headaches back when we did the transition. But nothing changes in this agreement compared to what we currently have as far as those details go. Fall Festival, still donating the roll off and all the trash cans. The five thousand dollar donation annually to the city is still in there that we spread out actually amongst all the customers to help with the few cents, you know, in reduction per year. We did negotiate with, thanks to Herschel and his team, we did negotiate that thirty some cents less than what we're paying currently. Over the ten year period, that's the savings of a hundred and six thousand dollars. And so I know that thirty some cents doesn't seem like much, but when you add that over the course of a ten year contract, and it's actually a hundred and six thousand dollars off of where we're at currently today. Now, of course, these numbers don't include, as you can see in the information that we sent out in the packets, our administrative fee. And so for Katie, or sorry, not Katie anymore, for Alicia, who is our billing clerk, to cover some of the expense of time for us to bill it out, because we bill it out, and that's what that dollar oh five, the administrative fee, that's been that way for far before I got here. That's what that covers. And so just because it's seventeen fifty six per month on here, you add that dollar oh five is what the actual customer pays per month. So just wanted to kind of lay that out there for you.
And one other question on the fuel charge. So if the fuel gets above four twenty five, are we talking about diesel price or are we talking about gasoline price? Diesel, okay.
Yeah, the only reason we do that on a ten years is because first of all, we don't know what's gonna happen. We at least like to cover ourselves to cover that.
Sounds good. Thanks, sir.
Dale? Oh, yeah, so it looks like it's being recommended for the ten year contract, which I don't have much of a problem with. The thing I'm looking here is in each of the agreements, it's a three percent after the initial, and wasn't the, our first five year two percent? Okay.
A lot has changed since we did that in two thousand twenty one. Cost of cost of parts, cost of.
Everything's gone up, except for, well, never mind. So did Mr. Clark or Mr. Miller, did we get any other people? We didn't send this out for an RFP. Okay. But we don't know if there's any competition that could make, give us a better deal. Granted, this seems like a pretty decent deal the way we, was presented.
Started off at sixteen fifty, five years ago, and now it's gonna go to seventeen fifty six. It's a dollar, what's it, a dollar seven?
Yeah.
Basically, yeah.
That's pretty good. And, and also too, you know, the, the other company that we were trying to decide between five years ago, I believe Waste Connections has now consumed them, or sorry, purchased them, sorry, acquired, acquired them. And so there's really not that many options in the general metro area. I reached out to other cities, a lot of them, I typically do not like ten year agreements. I'm not a fan of longer term agreements. I just don't think that's, it's wise. However, on the trash side of things, there's really not very many options in this area. If you recall, with Waste Management, when we had them and we were transitioning, I mean, they were well over twenty four, twenty five dollars per month. And that's just what they're gonna try to negotiate. So this is a fair price unless we, you know, get a, a group of communities together and we figure out how to do it ourselves and haul it to Butler County. There's, there's not really too many options for us.
Last question, this is effective January one, twenty twenty six. Is that correct? It starts January first, twenty twenty six, February first. Okay, thank you.
Amy?
I had the same question as Councilmember Kerstetter about looking at competitive bids, so thank you for answering that. Am I correct in reading that it's, it's a three percent increase every year? So after ten years, we're paying twenty one percent more than what we, or eighteen percent more, three times ten? Yes, okay.
I think that's right. I mean, I don't have math.
And so it's afterward, so the first three years, there's no increase.
Okay.
And then so in year four.
It is twenty one percent after.
Then it's three percent every year.
And, and I do think it's disappointing that we're charging the disabled and the people over seventy five more than what we're charging everyone else. People aged seventy five and over, or people that are disabled that have to have the carryout residential. It's seventeen eighty seven instead of seventeen fifty six. Is it possible that we could negotiate them paying the same rate?
I did reduce that to seventeen fifty six.
It's, it's all seventeen fifty six.
Yeah, you have to look at.
Yeah. I see, yeah. 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 Seventeen fifty six.
Okay, so that'll get changed before we sign off?
Should be.
Should be, yep.
Ours does not. Ours is seventeen eighty seven.
Oh, okay, yep.
I said, I made the correction.
Under rates and services, it's in a different area.
It's all seventeen fifty six.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
The reason, sorry.
Go ahead.
Councilmember, the reason why we have that on there is because we have to spell it out for the carryout service. And so that's a separate form that our residents have to fill out in order for them, and so that's why it has to be spelled out in the agreement.
Yeah.
It's something that.
That makes sense. It was just, it's just a different price on our copy.
Nope, seventeen fifty six. It's just to get changed. Sorry, my fault.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve of a new ten year agreement with Waste Connections. The proposed rate of seventeen fifty six per month will be guaranteed for the first three years with limits to rates increases in the next four to ten years.
I have a motion as second to approve the contract with Waste Connections. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, item C, approval of bid of Amber Ridge.
Thank you, Herschel.
Well, thank you, Herschel.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Samantha Graebe. I'll be representing S E H this evening. We held a bid letting for Amber Ridge Phase One, and we received three bids from qualified contractors. So it'd be our recommendation to award to Prado Construction LLC as they were the lowest alternate bid for concrete coming in at $1,819,969.75.
Any questions or comments? Dale?
Remind me which one's Amber Ridge?
It was going to be Trails End Phase Two.
Oh, we had to rename it?
Okay. Thank you. Motion to awarding the bid for the Amber Ridge Phase One project to Prado Construction LLC in the amount of $1,819,969.75, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bid to Prado Construction for the Amber Ridge Phase One project. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signature for raising your hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to ordinance number 1438-25, authorizing insurance of general obligation bonds.
Good evening, Mayor. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond counsel. I'm here for, I think, the next four items that all are kind of related. So with regards to this first item, it relates to the city's Series 2025-1 general obligation bonds. This morning, the city held a bond sale in conjunction with Piper Sandler, your financial advisor, at 11 o'clock in the morning. At that time, the city received five bids from interested investment banks to purchase those bonds. You can see a summary of the banks who submitted bids and pertinent information related to those bids. Based on the results of that bid process, the bid of Janie Montgomery Scott LLC, which is in the second column on the left there. It was determined to be the winning bid with a true interest cost to the city of 3.39%. As you can see, the second place bidder, the cover bid, was from Key Bank Capital Markets at a true interest cost of 3.40%. So basically, one basis point different was between the winning bid and the second place bid. So based on the information that Clayton Kelly with Piper Sandler provided to me clearly shows that it was a very competitive market today, and in his words, a good day to sell bonds. So it worked out pretty well in the city's favor there. With regards to these bonds, they're actually going to be used to pay off two outstanding series of temporary notes. The 2023-1 temporary notes, as well as a portion of the 2024-1 temporary notes. Those projects that are now going to be included in this bond issue included special assessment projects for, if you'll give me one second here. Related to the Sunflower Valley Edition, internal improvement projects, Prairie Lakes Edition Phase Three, internal improvement projects, Prairie Lakes Edition Phase Four, internal improvement projects, as well as a few of the projects on your capital improvements plan related to the Meridians Projects and Ford Broadway to Floodway, as well as the Pool and Rec Center projects. So all of those projects are included in this bond issue and will be repaid over the 20 year period of these bonds, partially from special assessments being levied on the properties from those subdivision projects, as well as city at large for the CIP projects. As I mentioned, they're 20 year bonds. They begin repayments in 2027 with the final payment in 2048, assuming approval of the bid to award the sale to Janie Montgomery and approval of the ordinance and related resolution. Then my firm, working with the city, will work towards closing of this bond issue on November 20, 2025. As always, you will not need to have a city council action or meeting on that date, but in essence, that's the day where the winning bidder will deposit the purchase price in the city's bank account. In exchange, they will get possession of the bonds. Those bond proceeds will be used to repay those two temporary notes that I previously talked about, as well as reimburse the city for a portion of the cost of those projects. So with that being said, I'll pause for any questions that you may have.
Dale?
I'm looking at the Janie Montgomery and then the next column over, Key Bank Capital. And I'm not a financial guy. I'm going to throw that out right now. So the interest cost to maturity at rates, the Key Bank is lower. And then there's a couple of other things that are lower. But I guess I'm not understanding. And also that there's a total insurance premium of $42,000 that, and that one is zero. So can you explain why that one is actually better, other than the interest rate?
To the best of my ability, the math does get very difficult very quickly. However, good catch there. So if you're looking at basically three rows up from the bottom, where it talks about the net interest cost to the city, the net interest cost for the Janie bid is actually a little bit higher than the net interest cost to the Key Bank bid, which is, I think, the point that you're bringing up. So when the sale of the bonds occurs, the award is based on the lowest true interest cost to the city. And so that is actually that that row that's just below that, where the Janie is, is the 3.39 versus the Key Bank that's 3.4. So why we determined to use the true interest cost as a measure of the best bid to the city is that it looks at the net interest cost dollar amount, but it also takes into account the cost of issuance related to the bonds, which includes the underwriter's discount, which is how much that the winning bank is actually going to make on the deal.
Okay.
It also takes into account the the time value of money. And so based on that calculation, there's a lower underwriting discount for the Janie bid than for the Key Bank bid, even though the total net interest cost may be higher. By the underwriter having a smaller compensation, that actually leads to a better outcome for the city on the true interest cost, because the cost of this financing is actually 0.01% less for the Janie bid than for the Key Bank bid.
Okay.
On your other question, the total insurance premium, so these bonds, when they were sold, the city has a double A minus rating. And so when the bonds were sold, the city said, this is our credit rating, which is a very good credit rating. However, if a bidder wanted to submit a bid that also had optional bond insurance associated with that, that was an option that the city said, you can do this if you want to as part of your bid. The reason why some banks might do that is the bond insurance companies have a double A rating, so one notch higher than what the city has. By having a slightly better credit rating through the bond insurance, that leads to overall, generally speaking, lower interest rates, lower interest costs. And so Janie Montgomery, when they purchased or when they submitted their bid, they chose to use the optional bond insurance, which includes a cost of $42,000. They pay that amount. That's not a, that's not an amount that the city pays. Key Bank decided to not use that optional bond insurance, which is why they're showing this is zero, because it the function of the different banks determining what they think is going to be the better deal, so then they can be the the ultimate low bidder and the winner of those.
Okay, well, and when I'm looking at the chart, it looks like we're paying the 42 grand, or is it, you just said that they are, okay.
They they are paying that out of the money that they that they're getting paid from the bond, yeah. So it's not, it's not a cost of the city.
Yeah.
Good questions.
Any other questions or comments? Need a motion to approve?
Move to accept the bid from Janie Montgomery Scott LLC and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid form selling the bonds.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance 1438-25. No, 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 wait. Where am I at?
You gotta go to the, look at the board.
Got to look up there. Okay. Shut up. To execute the bond sales, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signature for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Now, we need a second motion.
Moved away first reading of ordinance 1438-25 and approve ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2025-1, providing for the levy and collection of annual tax to pay principal and interest.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance 1438-25. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, signature for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to resolution 802-25.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the resolution associated with that bond issue that we just talked about the sale. The resolution is the longer document that contains kind of the the guts of the bond issue. It talks about what the money's being used for, how the bond is going to be repaid, the the tax rules that apply to that bond issue as well. So this is really where the detail is that that really describes the the deal that is the Series 2025-1 bonds.
Any comments? Motion to approve? Okay, Gina?
Do have a comment. We've done this before, so I'm not too terribly upset, but I don't appreciate getting this at the last minute to approve tonight. Just a comment.
And and I can, I can speak to that also, and I can understand that. So unfortunately, from the timing of how the sales occur, normally have those on the same day as the city council meeting that night. In a situation like this, where we have the two sales and the financial advisors working with both banks to make sure that everything checks out and is verified, to make sure that we do have the best. That takes a little bit of time. And so I apologize for getting these documents out to you late. It's really a function of when our firm is able to get those final interest rates and principal amounts that have been verified to make sure that they're accurate. And then me having enough time to get the documents turned around, I can understand it. It can be a very, a very time crunch and a very time sensitive manner. I'll be honest, some cities, in order to avoid that, actually have their sales a few days before their meeting date. And so they authorize the sale to occur, for instance, on the Thursday before the meeting date on Tuesday, and they authorize the mayor to award the sale in advance, so long as it meets certain parameters. And they do that to avoid this sort of a situation where we're not really running right up against the the meeting time in some cases to get these final documents out, because they are, I, I, I write these, so I know they're sizable documents. And they can take and take a little bit of time to work through.
Any other questions or comments? We get a motion to approve?
Motion to adopt resolution 802-25, which prescribes the form and details of and authorizes directs the sale and directs the sale and delivery of GO bonds, Series 2025-1.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 802-25. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signature for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to ordinance 1439-25.
Similar process on these. However, these relate to the Series 2025-2 general obligation bonds, sold at the same time, 11 o'clock this morning. Big picture, the reason these were sold is a different series than the bonds that we just approved, or because these bonds are taxed. So under, under federal tax law, the bonds that were just approved are tax exempt. There was a small portion of the projects related to the CIP projects that had a small taxable component associated with them due to the developer guarantee on the TIF project. That's why we had to split out this as a separate series. Sale was held at the same time at 11 o'clock. As you can see from the bid tab on here, there were four bids that were received on this sale. The winning bid was from Bernardi Securities with a true interest cost of 4.61%. As you can see, the cover bid was submitted by Central State's Capital Markets at a interest rate of 4.66%. So once again, very close between the first place bid and the second place bid. As Clayton has mentioned, that means that that is a very competitive market and that you're really getting a good representation of market interest rates on these sales. So with that being said, you know, the the process for the approval of this will be the same. You know, award the bid and then the ordinance, and then the second action, or I guess the third action that will be to approve the resolution. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have on this bond issue as well.
Dale?
The interest rate variation has everything to do with the taxable portion. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to accept bid from Bernardi Securities Incorporated, authorize mayor and city clerk to execute the bid form setting the bonds, selling the bonds.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Bernardi Securities, Inc. for the execution of bid forms, selling the bonds. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signature for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I move to waiver first reading of ordinance 1439-25 and approve ordinance which authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2025-2, providing for the levy and collection of annual tax to pay principal and interest.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1435-25, or 39-25, excuse me, for authorizing insurance taxable general obligation bonds. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signature for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item G, resolution 803-25. GO bond series.
This is a resolution that contains the details about the repayment and use of the Series 2025-2 bonds.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 803-25, which prescribes the form and details and authorizes and directs the sale of delivery of GO bond, Series 2025-2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 803-25, GO bond, Series 2025-2. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signature for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item H, approval of change order number two on Second Street Project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So we have before you this change order. Fortunately, during the construction, the first parts of the bridge construction out on Seneca, it was discovered that the water main, 12 inch water main, was approximately three feet further east than where they had originally had it marked. Now, the bridge could actually probably be constructed with that water line where it is. However, if something happened to that water line where it is, it would be nigh on impossible to get down in there to fix that. As unfortunate as it was that it, that that wasn't discovered in the very beginning, it eventually would have been discovered and had to been moved. So if that would have been, if it would have been located in its spot in the very beginning, this cost would have been in the total price anyway. And then also, when we found this water line, it was discovered during the detention, the grading of that bridge during the detention. There was barely 18 inches of coverage over that 12 inch line, so it would have had to been deeper.
Any questions or comments? Amy?
Because I don't know the process, how do we miss a water line by three feet?
So, well, so we, we've had trouble all the way through this process with trying to locate to locate this water line. And one of the, one of the problems we were having was trying to locate tracer wire on this line. We did discover there was tracer wire on this line, however, it wasn't above the ground where we can hook our locator into it, so you couldn't use the tracer wire. So basically, we're gonna, we have to go really by previous design documents, go by GIS, and sometimes that's, it's come close.
Thank you.
Dale?
So is this line on the west side of the, where the bridge is, or the east side of the, where the bridge is?
On the west side, sir.
The west side, okay.
Yeah, and as, as it comes up Seneca, it'll be on the west side, and then, and then it'll meander into the east and then come back out.
That services Fiddler's Creek? It, so it goes north and south, it services?
Yes, yes.
Fiddler? Okay.
And then they will tie in to that line and go into the new development, the Trails Inn and Amber Ridge, and they will tie into that line, and it'll serve.
Any other questions or comments? Again, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve of change order number two from Wildcat Construction for the Seneca Street Project. The change order amount, twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars, resulting in a new contract price of four million eight hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cents, and authorized the mayor to sign.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve change order number two for Seneca Street Project. Any other comments or questions? Everybody, excuse me. Everybody signify raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Very much.
Excuse me. Moving on to resolution number eight oh one dash twenty-five, vacate portion A now Park
Mayor and council, about a month ago, you passed the ordinance actually vacating this portion of the right-of-way on the Park Street. The way that statute's drawn, once you pass an ordinance, you're required to follow up with a confirmatory resolution before it can be actually provided to the register of deeds office, and during that time, if anyone protests that action, then we would have to hear him, have a hearing before the council. That has not happened, so we're passing this resolution tonight to make that vacation final, filed with the register of deeds office. Stand for any questions you may have.
Any comments?
Move to approve resolution eight oh one dash twenty-five, confirming ordinance fourteen thirty-one dash twenty-five, vacating a portion of A Street now Park Street.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve ordinance number eight oh one dash twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to search committee report.
You want me to take that? You want to take that? Yeah. So the committee that the council tasked with hiring a, an interim city administrator met, and after discussions, decided that the bulk of the, the work for the interim was going to fall on the shoulders of two individuals anyway. So what was decided was that we would make Kristy Carruthers and Clint Miller co-interim city administrators. So we're giving you an update because we don't have to vote on it since you all gave us the, the go-ahead. There was a lot of worry, I think, about what was going to happen, and, and we've had interims in the past, and the work seems to fall on the existing staff anyway, so we decided to compensate those two individuals and name them co-interim. Thank you.
Thank you.
With very little arm twisting.
A little bit, man.
A little.
Okay. Well, I thank you guys for taking the reins, too. Thank you. Now, this is another part of the committee's discussion, kind of get a feel for the city, for the council on our residency requirement for, for a city administrator. We don't have an ordinance that could be found that says they have to live in town. There is an ordinance that says it can be contractually negotiated, I think is what the word says.
Council, council may require.
Yeah, may require. So we, we have several, wouldn't say they're applications yet. There might be a few. I got a list, we haven't seen them all yet, that if that's a requirement, they won't be applying for the job. It's not, they're not people that live, you know, fifty miles away, but if they have to live in Valley Center, have to move to Valley Center, uproot their family to Valley Center, they, they weren't, wouldn't be interested in the job. So we, as the committee, couldn't answer for the council. So that's why this item is brought up. It's brought up for discussions, to give us a little bit of guidance, I guess, is what we're asking. So we're open for discussion or guidance. Ben?
I'll give my two cents first on this. It's kind of been a longstanding rule that they live in, in the city of Valley Center, and I've heard, I've heard it discussed in the past that, you know, they're passing rules that don't apply to them, or they're, they're, you know, raising taxes that won't apply to them, and my answer to that is the city administrator does not make those decisions, the city council does. And my thought is, I would like to make the pool of applicants as large as possible so we can get the best person for the job. That's all I got.
Ben?
My thoughts on it is one thing, do you want the best, or do you want the best that will move to the city? I've kind of struggled with it at first, but I've talked to a few people, quite a few people, that times were kind of changing. I mean, four years ago, you didn't know what remote work was from home. It's just a changing of the guard, and if, if we got a good guy out there.
Or gal.
Want to pass on.
Or gal.
Or gal.
Or gal.
Applicant, that's a good.
Applicant, yes.
For the HR, for the HR purposes, applicant.
Yes.
Dale?
So my thought is if they're within thirty minutes, I'm just throwing out a number, okay? Thirty-minute driving distance, okay? But if they're applying from Kansas City to Pika, they obviously got to move, and if they're going to move anyway, then might as well move into the city limits. At bare minimum, the school district, but I've had, I've heard both ways from, I've just been asking random people, and there might be some people out here that want to comment, and I'd like to hear your comments, too, if we can allow that. But yeah, that's my two cents, as far as if they're going to move, they have to move anyway to get the job, they should be living in the city. If they're already, say, within that thirty-minute, I don't know. And it's, it's, it's got to be the right candidate, too.
If we hire the, the correct applicant, it doesn't really matter where they live. If it, he or she is a, is a great city administrator and doesn't live in Valley Center, he's still a great administrator. If he or she is not a great administrator and lives in Valley Center, we're going to fire them anyway. So what difference, I mean, it doesn't matter where they live.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I agree with Ben on this. I think we need to have the, the pool as, as large as possible. It's certainly something we can take into consideration if we have our top three candidates and two of the three are willing to move and the third is not. That's certainly something that could weigh in on the decision, but I, I agree that we need to keep the pool as big as pop, as possible.
Any other comments?
I have one more.
Ben?
I, I agree with Dale on the, I like the thirty-minute radius. That includes a lot of areas in the metropolitan area. And I think absolutely, if there's a candidate that's relocating, we can require them to, I, I think they, we, we say the same thing, but we would encourage to live in, in Valley Center if they can. We don't have a shortage of housing, so.
That's true, especially with all the loans going up.
Yes.
With lots of different price ranges. Can we ask, is there anybody in the public that wants to comment?
Any public like to comment on this issue?
All right.
Okay. Ben?
I forgot what I was going to say.
Thanks.
No problem. It'll come to me in a second.
Okay. You've still got one more chance, besides the German.
So, I don't mind. We don't have to make a motion on this or anything, but I'm just going to take it to consensus.
I would like to.
Would you?
I, I think so. We have a formal, a formal vote from the council. I don't know if that's.
Ben?
I know, I was going to say, we can still require that person to be involved in the community, go to tree lightings, go to farmers markets, Fall Fest, make an, an appearance like he's part of the, he or she is part of the community.
Candidate.
Okay, well, you want to make a motion?
But so, before you make the motion, what are you, how are you going to make the motion? Because we.
Why I'm having Ben do it?
Because we're kind of, it's all in agreement that the best candidate, okay, within whatever radius, but I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot in the future.
Well, it, to me, it's just for this candidate, it's just for this search, because we don't have an ordinance that says, it says we may in the ordinance, so we are maying right now.
Okay.
And our HR person wants to talk.
Well, I'm just going to put it out, when we did do the advertisement, I did do it in consultation with council president Anderson and mayor Truman, and they didn't want to specifically put it in there because of the lowering the pool of candidates. So it's not in there as a requirement at this point. So I, you know, if you're voting, are you voting they don't, they do? I, I don't know what exactly.
I, I just want to have a specific motion and vote by the council so that, so that anyone applying knows, so there's no ambiguity on whether we're going to require it or not. Does that make sense?
You put in the thirty minutes or whatever, or?
Or just a motion.
Like, I, I guess I'm getting mixed signals because you're saying thirty minutes, but if they're moving anyway, then you're going to be requiring them.
How about we just?
I mean, it's all a contractual.
Right.
I don't, I don't like the idea of a motion anymore.
Well, at this point, we could say that there's not a residency requirement, because we can require whatever we want in their contract, correct? Is that, is that right? Okay. Does anyone, I just think we need a stance one way or the other of, if we're going to require this and not just leave it hanging.
I understand, I just, I don't want us to get put in a position to where, yo, you said this, but now you're doing this, but that's going to happen anyway.
Well, then that's why I say if we just say that we are not requiring residency.
Yeah.
So, do I? No, not yet, I will.
Ron's got a comment, question? Ron?
Okay. Since I sat on the board last time selecting someone coming in, I found out over the years, irregardless of the individual that we pick and where his living condition's going to be, I feel that being truthful, I'd rather have a state within the city limits. Not going to Mays or someplace else to do it, and the simple reason is, if there's an accident or a, a project that has to be taken care of immediately, that thirty minutes, thirty minutes can make a big difference. And the reason I'm telling you this is because from, I'm going back to my military days, if you're five minutes late, there's a lot going to happen in thirty minutes. You need somebody that can be here within that three to five-minute frame. He's living in Valley Center, he can be here, or she can be here, whatever. So that's my opinion.
Okay, Ben?
I, I have a rebuttal to that, because that, that was the discussion that I've had with people in the past, and it's no different if their city administrator's gone on a week-long vacation and they're on a cruise somewhere in an ocean. If something happens, if, you know, we had Barton Solvents explosion, we have other people in place to take care of that, we have emergency responders, we have, we have other city staff, department heads, and, and my feeling is that that doesn't matter because they can't, it's not a twenty-four-seven job that they're required. So that's, that is, that's the contrarian point of view of that. So they're not always going to be within three to five minutes of something that happens.
Ron?
Well, I hate to start an argument here, but I'm going to. When you are working for a group of individuals and they have a specific line of having somebody come in and say that, he says, okay, I'm going to be thirty-five minutes, I'm going to be forty minutes away from the house, or away from the city, and nobody shows up, and yet we have to have somebody that has to have requirements and be able to make the decisions. Say, well, we can get anybody from the city staff. Well, that's true, but there's a lot of things, if you look at the regulations, city staff member cannot rule on. So it goes back to who makes the decision, the city administrator does. Where's the city administrator? He's, he's thirty-five, forty, maybe fifty minutes out. So it doesn't work that way. What does work, somebody that is in the area within a three-to-five-minute time period. And with that, it's not acceptable, that's fine, but that's my thoughts.
Ben?
I, I think a work-life balance is very important, and I don't think someone should be required to be on call twenty-four-seven for this job, quite honestly. That's not what we're asking them to sign up for, we're asking them to manage city staff. So I'll just have to disagree with you on that.
Any other questions or discussion? Do you want to make a motion?
I move that we do not have a residency requirement for the city administrator. The living, the requirement will be negotiated in the contract of the person that we hire.
I have a motion and a second.
Can you restate that, please?
We are not, we are not requiring them to live in the city limits. Their, their residency requirement will be negotiated in their contract.
Okay.
And that, that leaves it up to, that's not setting a thirty-minute, that's not setting a relocation, if it's someone that's relocating, then we can say that we want them, but we're not requiring it right now. No, I'm just saying, that's, that's kind of what I was trying to get at.
I'm okay with that compromise.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second for the residency requirement for our city administrator, our search for our city administrator. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Okay, moving on to an executive session with consult with attorney deemed privileged. It's about. Five, 10 minutes? 10? Okay. Can I get a motion? Go into executive session. I have the motion in front of me. Gina, can you do it?
Move for council to recess into executive session for the consultation with attorney deemed privileged. Session to include council members, mayor, city attorney, and HR director. The open meeting will resume in City Council Chamber in 10 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion, second to go into executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same side. Motion carried.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
No official action was taken in executive session.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to staff reports. Kyle, you're first.
All right, good evening. First, I'd like to introduce Sabrina Young, our new community development assistant. She's here training with Katie so she can potentially help run the cameras for these meetings, so I want to introduce her to you. She has been very busy at the last meeting. I told you she wrote over 200 roofing permit, or permits, most of those are roofing, in September, and she has already surpassed that. We're probably 300 plus at this point, and we still have basically two weeks to go of the month, so very busy with permits. And doing a great job. I don't know if she wants to say anything. She comes from Central County. She was there for about 13 years. Is that right? So excited to have her here with us.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
And do you want to say anything? And then the only other item is hopefully at the meeting in a few weeks, I'll have an announcement for hiring for our code enforcement officer.
Good, thank you. Any questions, Troy? Thank you, Kyle. Neil's not here. Fill in for Lloyd.
Yes, I am. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I have nothing to report for staff. But I'll stand for any questions.
I like the formal.
Yeah, I do, too. I was gonna say.
Going to the podium.
From down there, it'd been hard.
I could've, but I wanted to.
You got any questions for him?
No, nope. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So the last time I gave an update on the cleaning of the right of way over there on Second Street, Mr. Quant was working with Evergy to get a line dropped. I got an email from him this week. Apparently, he's got that line dropped. He's wanting to get started pending whether later this week or next week. So looks like we're getting close to getting started on that, so thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Rodney. New engineer, Barry?
Good evening again. Very brief update on the storm damage. We did have 25 vehicles with damage. Three of those have been totaled out. They were older vehicles. At this point in time, we had all three of them hauled away. The last one was just today. The other two were last week. We've deposited the money on those three, and again, at this point, we're not going to replace them. What we have started doing on the remaining vehicles is we have two of them at a time at Conklin Cars and Newton. They've allocated two spots to us. We're going to put one in there at all times that is a large amount of damage that may take upwards of a month or so, and we're going to put one in there with a very small amount of damage that's pretty much paintless dent repair. Every time one of those finishes up, another spot's going to take that of the same type. So it's going to probably take many, many months to get through some of the damaged vehicles. We did have several with very extensive damage. The very first one, I believe, is a Tahoe. It's not yours. It was Detective's. Tahoe's the first one up there, and then again, a second one doing paintless dent repair. On the building side, we had over $200,000 in damage. I have most of the estimates. There's a few things on playground equipment, a few small items that I still do not have yet. We're still looking at that $79,000 out-of-pocket deductible between all cars and vehicles and having to fix the roof on that sewer building that is essentially not going to be covered. We're going to start fixing the first two buildings that are having leaking issues immediately. One of those, the sewer building, and another one is a well. And then the other ones, I don't know what they'll be able to do over the winter, but a lot of this is going to go into the spring and early next year when the weather's nicer, but we're going to try to at least get a couple of them done this year while the weather's still good that are having actual water come through the building right now. I'll stand for any questions. I just want to give you a quick update.
Questions? Thank you, Clint.
Well, I just want to formally thank City Administrator Clark. I've worked with him very closely for the last six years. I've learned a tremendous amount and just hung on for a wild ride with all of the things that happened. Last time we went through this, we were kind of a quiet little town, so that's not where we are anymore, so thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Last time as City Administrator, I say that, which is unique, different for me. In your packets, I just put in there, just for your reference, an updated concept of that downtown, you know, that thing, you know, the downtown lot is an exciting, hopefully, adventure if you so choose to go down at some point, but that's what it is, just a concept. It can be changed, it can be molded into whatever you want, but the one that is in your packets that's also online can be, you know, is a little bit more park-focused. It has more green space that you guys had requested, but wanted to make sure that that was there in case there's any interest, of course. Want to thank you all. Thank you all, and then thank you, Chrissy, for your wonderful comments. This last six years, it has been a wild ride. If you remember the ones that were here when Mayor Lori Dove and the council members at the time were involved in my hiring, you know, I said, if you want to do a lot of projects and you want to get a lot of things done, then hire me. If not, there's nothing wrong with that. It's okay to be a community that just maintains status quo, but if you want some excitement, then I'm your person. And I think that I've fulfilled that obligation extremely well over the last six years, and I couldn't have done it without a strong mayor, you know, Mayor Lori Dove, Mayor Cicero, Mayor Truman, all the various council members that I have had a contact with over the years that have come and gone. And more importantly, I couldn't have done it without all the staff. I mean, the staff that have been with me from the beginning, you know, until the end as City Administrator, we couldn't have done it without a strong foundation. And that foundation starts with every employee that we have and getting to know them and not just a smile and a handshake, but getting to know them. I mean, I've met incredible people over the course of my 17-year career in public sector. Yeah, this wasn't my first gig, like some think. And it has been an extremely rewarding career in the public sector. Those are friendships with those colleagues that I will have forever, and I look forward to continuing. The most exciting thing about my transition to the private sector is that my family and I, we have found our home Valley Center. We're not going anywhere. We're going to live here, still in the same house. Now, it might not be as accessible because I always prided myself as City Administrator of being 24/7. You can still dial six tonight and still get me at any time. I may have, you know, a Mountain Dew and Cheez-It in my hand, but I'll answer. I'll definitely answer. And that is the type of administrator I've always been my entire 14-year career as a City Administrator out of those 17. Didn't think this early on in my life that I would be transitioning into the private sector, but I am. Looking forward to the opportunity. I'll be out in the audience, of course, hopefully in the near future with being enthusiastic about projects coming up as not only, you know, potentially in my new role, but also as a citizen. I'm not going anywhere, like I said. My kids, they want to graduate a Hornet. We love being Hornets in Valley Center. We'll still paint Hornets on driveways. I'm sure my wife will sign me up for those things. And not getting rid of her involvement, too, and want to thank Haley, my wife, and Davina, who was born here, for all the encouragement and strength through the good times and bad times. So it's been truly an honor and privilege to be your City Administrator the last six years, and wish everyone nothing but the best. So thank you.
Moving on to staff reports. I attended the Municipalities Conference last weekend, last weekend, weekend before last, and it was quite interesting. Clint and Chrissy both were there. Lots of workshops. One of the workshops we found pretty interesting that I was going to go to was closed due to the federal shutdown, so that affected even that conference. But at the Municipalities Service Awards, we had three candidates in the book. Nick Manning, our fire captain for 30 years. Samuel Burkholder, our fire lieutenant for 15 years, and our own HR director, Chrissy, in here for five, six, seven? I'm getting there. Yeah, seven. So, well, it says 10 here, so you've been here longer than. So anyway. We've got some longevity in town here. It makes me feel older because I coached Nick in soccer when he was just a little big guy, so just makes me feel older. I want to congratulate Brent for his service here in Valley Center. I've only been involved with Brent for two years. I got to admit, he's probably one of the best City Administrators that I have ever worked with, and I've worked with at least three others for the city. And his enthusiasm was scary when I first met him, because I'd never had a City Administrator that on fire for a city, let alone his job. But we're going to miss you. And I had the plaque that we give you at your recognition that I presented to him, but after this fiasco, I'm kind of glad he's resigning. No, he's a hoot to work with, and I really, we're going to miss him here in town, I think. We are. I mean, he's going to be in town. He'll probably be a real pain in the neck coming up here from now on. We're not controlling his payroll now, so anyway, we look forward to seeing him. I still got the gavel. Yet, yet is the word. So, yeah, that's all I have. Ron?
It's hard, Brent. There's few people I get close to. You know, they work pretty good. I'd like to thank you for your time, and don't forget where I live at. You and your wife can come out now. Anytime you want to. Oh, call me first. But it's been a pleasure working with you. That's all.
Thank you, Ron, and you, Dorley.
Robert?
Young man, it's been a crazy five years that I've been up here with you. It's been absolutely amazing, you know, coming from a town like Andover after the tornado and watching how it grew afterwards, and you basically are doing the same thing with this town of getting it headed in the right direction it needed to be headed to. I know growth's not easy for anybody, but it is what was needed in order to provide the type of living, I think, that everyone in this community deserves, including yourself. And so I am super proud to have been able to be with you on this ride the last five years, and I wish you the best of luck with SEH. I know they will treat you right, and you'll treat them right, probably even better. So congratulations on that, and I wish you and your wife and your family the best. Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you. A few things I wanted to say. I've spent the last four weekends knocking on doors for my campaign, and I just wanted to share some of the feedback I got from the residents. One of the things was the annexed, there are several annexed areas in my ward out west and south, and I had a lot of residents say that they'd like for us to take better care of their roads. The county had done a wonderful job, and it's since then, it's not been the best, so I hope that's. I did talk with Rodney, and I understand that the budget is very, very limited, and we have to pick and choose, but hoping that that's something we can look at in the future. The second thing that I heard was an issue with trash at a construction site in the development just north of Wheatland, thank you, west. And I did learn from Kyle that once we do notify them that they need to pick up their trash, they have 10 days to do it, and we're not to that 10 days yet. But it was sitting out there for two weeks before they notified us, and now people are picking up trash out of their front yard because this construction site is not picking up after theirselves. And so on my walk today, I stopped, and there was somebody working there, and I just asked him, can you please take your trash with you today? And he said, yes, he would, and I went by before the meeting, and it's still there. In fact, there's more. So I'm just hopeful that we can, I don't know what kind of enforcement we can do on that, but I just hope that we can do something when we get the 10-day mark so that residents aren't picking up after construction workers. And lastly, I want to thank Brent for answering all of my stupid questions since June. It's been a short period, but you've always been extremely receptive and not made me feel silly by some of the questions that I ask, so thank you and good luck.
Brett? I feel like we just hired you yesterday, and I also feel like you've been here for 50 years, so I still remember the Facebook post I made, which you sent to me not too long ago, right after you, the night you were sworn in, I believe. And you definitely left Valley Center better than you found it. So we appreciate you and your family, all your involvement, and we hope that continues. Thank you.
Ena?
Thank you. We're going to miss you a lot. Come to the meetings, come to the chamber, come to the fall fest, you know, you know the drill. Got to do it all. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Dale?
Good luck on your next adventure. I'll keep it brief.
I want to go back to when we hired you. We had the meeting here in the chambers, and I had the three candidates that were there, and the other two had come in and just kind of sat over against the wall. And then Brent walked in and introduced himself as the next Valley Center Administrator to everybody and shook these two guys' hands. I'm like, okay, who is this guy? This is who we need because of the energy you brought. So I appreciate all that you've done for this town. I hope you and your family well, and whatever happens, you'll always be known as Concrete With that, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion second to adjourn. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion signify raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Being adjourned.